Okay, good after or good evening, everybody. And welcome to our July 28th City Council meeting. It is a little after six o'clock. Sorry for the technical difficulties here. Just to give you guys a heads up, I'm kind of battling some laptop issues here at City Hall. So I'm on my iPad right now. I may switch over to a laptop. We're trying to get that to work at the at this time right now. But with that, I'll call the meeting to order and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic. One. Under God, indivisible, with purity and justice for all. Okay, and roll call, please, Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan. Councilmember Duncan. I see Councilmember Duncan has logged in, but I can't hear her audio.
Okay. Should we just go ahead and go on and know that she's here?
You can go on. I do show that she's present electronically and just so if she can hear us, just let us know when we're when you're online, Councilmember Duncan, please. So seven virtually present.
Okay, thank you. All right, I hope everyone had a last our good last couple of weeks. Just want to comment real quick on our COVID situation. Our numbers in the county and the state have been rising. I listened to the governor today and it sounded like he is is hopefully optimistic, I guess, in that they're thinking that we're going to be our numbers are going up, but it's not so drastic that that it's looking like they're going to have to go back on anything yet. Though with the caveat that here in the county, our numbers are have been subtly increasing quite a bit over the last week or two. And so we're still kind of right on that cusp of them taking back some of our variances. Or I don't think they'll take back variances, but at least make us go in a little bit more of a restriction. I don't think we're going to go back into a full on shutdown again. I think they're trying to avoid that at all costs. But the possibility is still there that we may roll back on some of the variances and things. So, you know, again, I go back to as if you're wearing masks, thank you for doing that. And and again, I have to emphasize that the powers that be, the ones that are making these decisions at the county level with the health department and the and the governor and all those people and and even us here. If we're seeing people wearing masks and you and you're cooperating as best as possible, keeping the social distancing, all those things, we'll be able to keep those numbers down. And 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 we've shown that it works. And so, you know, again, I know there's this thought that there's a conspiracy theory, all these things out there, which are frankly, just kind of ridiculous at this point. But if, you know, we just got to make sure that we're we're doing our part and and showing that we're trying because if we if we don't look like it, then there I think they're going to start rolling back on some of these restrictions. So it's just important that it's as simple as wearing a mask. And if you're going out to the store and thing and it's 20 minutes, if unless you're there for the long haul. But we can all do it to help each other out. So we'll see how it goes over the next week or two and and hopefully we can keep the numbers where they are and start going back down again, but we'll see. We've got schools starting up here in probably about another two or three weeks, I think, is what they said. They moved Fountain for Carson back a week. And so, you know, we want to make sure the kids can get back in and they're they're working very hard and feverishly to try to put some things together and make sure kids can get back in a classroom. So let's all cooperate and get through this thing quickly. So with that, we're going to keep moving forward. I have no presentations or board commission committee appointments. So I'm going to go ahead and go to our city council agenda requests and announcements. And I'm going to start with Ms. Duncan. If you've gotten your mic started.
Mayor Ortega, Councilmember Duncan did message or chat to the group, just stating that her connection is slow and it keeps saying that it's lost. So if you prefer, we can have her respond via chat and or text, and I can try and relay that.
Okay, so why don't you if if Deetra, if you're listening and you can, if there's anything of importance that you'd like for us to talk about tonight, if you can't get it to work, just like she said, either chat with us or text either myself or Sylvia, and we'll I'll come back to you at the end here after we go through everybody else. So we'll just kind of do it that way. Okay, and then looking to my right, Mr. Geek, anything tonight?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Applegate.
I don't have anything important.
Okay, Ms. Estes.
Only thing I have to say is we had our first blood drive here for the city of Fountain, and we did very, very well. It was last Friday and Saturday, two weeks ago. And I think they collected 34 units of blood. So kudos to everybody that participated in that. And we will be looking at holding another one. I think we're looking at September. So keep an eye out for that and keep supporting that initiative. Thanks.
Okay, well, thanks for doing that for us. And when I went, I did get mine drawn. And and when I was there, there were even just people who saw the flyer in the city and and went and came in and got there. So it wasn't just city staff or city council people that were in there. So thank you for doing that. It's the first one I think we've done in probably forever as far as the city level. I know a couple of organizations around here have done them, but thanks for doing all that for us on that. Anything else, Ms. Estes?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protem, anything?
Yeah, just real quick, and I'm going to keep it super quick tonight since nothing of any positive benefit happened. Since our last council meeting, I went to the Monetary Mitigation Fund Advisory Committee meeting, had an awful lot of counsel and an awful lot of citizens in attendance. I really, really appreciate that for reasons I did not expect and don't want to go into tonight. It was great to have you there and have you be able to provide some support behind the scenes. The Monetary Mitigation Fund Advisory Committee meeting went approximately as we expected. With that committee, any project that's being presented above the county line between Pueblo and El Paso County is pretty much a foregone conclusion that they're going to vote against it or find some way to oppose it. Since that was the case, as was expected, as part of a strategic move to to give us a little more time to do some collaboration with Colorado Springs Utilities and potentially some other folks. At last Friday's district board meeting, I asked for our item to be postponed until next month. All the board members were very supportive of that. And then I've gotten some offline communication from some of the board members north of the county line indicating that they are waiting to be supportive of us when we do ever present that Southmore Drive project. So I I hesitate to put an optimism score on there. The project's not not by any means a done deal, but neither is it completely off the table at this point. So we'll keep working towards next month's board meeting. That'll be the last Friday of the month. We're still going for virtual on that. And then in between now and then, we'll be reaching out as necessary to council members and any interested citizens, feel free to email me or call or text on the number that's on the city website. And I'll be happy to either discuss or text back and forth about the issue with you. Otherwise, that's all I've got pending any questions.
Okay, no, I think I know there was at least one citizen that was on there and and Mr. Rick. But from what I understand, you know, it was a kind of a brutal meeting for Fountain. But outside of that meeting, we've gotten some other things moving in a positive direction. And I think CSU will be a lot more cooperative. And since we are one of their partners and and in SDS and the whole reason why they're allowed to go forward with the 1041 and everything. So I got some great, I think we're going to in a better position than than we were before that meeting. I knew it was going to be kind of tough anyway, and we're battling Pueblo County. And Pueblo County just needs to understand that projects north of the Pueblo County line and El Paso County line need to occur in order for the entirety of that that stretch of the creek to to see any benefit. They want all the work to be done only in Pueblo County. It just it doesn't make sense because all the water is coming from here, all the damage is coming from up here. So in in order to get it not to demolish what's down there, you want to fix it up here first. So it's a concept we've been fighting with them about since the formation of the board. And for some reason, they they are choosing not to understand that. I don't know why, but it's a lot of politics involved, and we'll keep that fight going and go from there. Okay, anything else, Mayor Protem?
No, sir, nothing else for me.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Thompson.
I had a phone call from a citizen talking about the new play equipment at Auga Park. And she just wanted to really, really thank the city and the staff for the the all-inclusive new play area. Children don't even want to go on lights and swings anymore because they're having so much fun with all those panels that we picked out. And she was just very, very appreciative. So thank you to everybody that worked on that and had a great meeting with some people about maybe some grant opportunities. So that's great. But Scott, the the construction on, is it Allegra and 85 there by Dairy Queen where the whole street's blocked? How much longer is that going to go on?
Todd, you know the answer to that?
Yeah, they haven't given us a specific date. We've been connecting with the federal folks. They're working on the PFA and PFO along with Whitefield Water, and they have not committed to a certain date. But we're pushing them to get it done as soon as possible.
Oh, you're talking about by the loaf of, sorry, you said 7-Eleven. That was throwing me off. I'm like, wait a minute.
No, no, Dairy Queen. It's by Dairy between Dairy Queen and, yeah.
Yeah, I got you, I'm with you.
Yeah, okay, I was just curious. All right, it just seems like it's going on a really long time, so I was just curious. Okay, thank you.
We are sharing, just so you know, we're extremely unhappy as how long it's taking. But because it is a federal-led project, Whitefield Water doesn't have an impact on that, nor do we. So we're pushing because we're not happy as well.
Yeah, it's just kind of a double whammy for that neighborhood.
Absolutely.
More, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go back to Ms. Duncan and see if her mic is working.
Mayor, we did get a text from her. I can read that if her mic isn't up.
Okay, I was just, I got a text that also said, try to see if she's if it's working. If not, I will go ahead. Thanks, Paul. Ms. Duncan just wants to make sure to encourage youth ages 14 to 18 register for the new youth council that we have starting up that she's kind of spearheading. I think they're working on how to get the information out to schools in the district and in the middle of all this and trying to just get connected with the district. So for those of you who know any 14 to 18 year olds that would like to be on this, I'm assuming that they can get the in where can they get the application and things for this, Scott?
Yeah, so we have the applications online as well as here at City Hall in the on the second floor.
Okay, great.
We're also looking to get those applications out to the schools when they open up again as well.
Okay, great. So again, if you know anybody 14, 18 years old that would like to give this a try, applications are online at fountaincolorado.org and or you can come to City Hall and get them as well. So I hope that's it for Ms. Duncan on that one. With that, I don't think I have anything today other than just kind of the information I shared earlier. We do have our numbers, and I got to find those again. But again, in general, we are moving in a direction where they are going up again. There's a lot of factors involved. And if you listen to the governor, this there's just a lot of different things that are the reasons why. And I think the hope is that we'll get past a lot of that issue and and the numbers can start leveling out and are going back down again. So with that, everyone, just do your part, please, and we'll get through it. I think that is it. I didn't go through the the panel as far as what you need to do if you're in the public and wanting to raise hands or anything. We will, if you have any questions, you can go to the the little hand next to your name, and that should raise your hand, and I can see if that's there. So Paul, do you want to go through this real quick? I'm sorry.
Certainly, no problem. Thank you for attending tonight. If you'd like to make a comment on your your interface to GoToWebinar, you'll see a little toolbar. At the bottom of the toolbar, there's a hand icon. To raise your hand virtually, just click the hand icon and the arrow will change from green to red. And then, once you do that, a member of staff can call upon you with the name you registered and we'll unmute you for your comments.
Okay, thank you. On the public to be heard, citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. We ask that you sign up with the clerk part of the meeting, and council may not be able to provide immediate answer. We'll direct staff to follow up and out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. I know we didn't get anything via email, but I do see Mr. Rick has a question. Go ahead and try talking. I don't think I don't see you as muted here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just one's question, is the project to connect the four wells in the city to one central filter building can, is it proceeding? And when do we expect that to be completed? Thank you.
Yes, it is proceeding. I think we're still in the very early stages and working with the Army Corps of Engineers. I don't know, is Dan or I know Carl's on, is Dan on that can answer this question?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Okay, yeah, this is Dan Blankenship, Utilities Director. Corey, they have started construction on that project. And that is, and once again, a a federal project. We we have a small part in that, but we are working with them and monitoring that. And we anticipate that that will be completed sometime after the first of the year. But we don't have a specific completion date right now.
Thank you.
It is under actually underway.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, and I'm going to go back to the public here, and I don't see anybody else's hands up. Okay, we will continue moving forward on to item number seven, our consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine, will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of the council. And we only have one item today. It's our meeting minutes from the July 14th meeting. What would council like to do with this item?
Just make a motion?
Yes, yeah, because I can't, it's not showing.
Okay, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval, Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
How do you vote?
And who are who you said?
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote? Mayor Ortega, I'm going to pause for just a moment on that final vote and see if I have a chat.
Yes.
Oh, there she is.
There she is. Thank you, seven yes, motion carried.
All right, great. And again, for public and attendees tonight, I apologize for all the the hiccups we're having tonight. It's kind of weird. I knew it was eventually going to come, and if this is it, hopefully we'll knock on some wood. But this will be good enough for tonight as far as the hiccups we have, and we'll keep moving forward. So we're going to go ahead and move on on our agenda. We're on item number eight, old business. And there are no items tonight for new old business, and we'll move into item number nine, new business. Nine A is consideration of items removed, and we did not have any. So item nine B, resolution 20-054, a resolution to approve the purchase of 0.976 acres intended for access and easements for the new East Fountain substation located in El Paso County, Colorado. And I know it says Mr. Christian, but we're going to let our city attorney Johnson go ahead and speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just assumed that you'd rather see my face instead of Carl's, so I'm going to present this one. If you if you all remember either last meeting or or two meetings ago, you approved a purchase for a three acre site for the new substation planned. And and so what we realized in kind of after that and during the process is that it was going to be very difficult to get that location annexed into the city. And so we came up with a solution to actually purchase a swath of land kind of running the length of that piece that would allow that that piece of land to be annexed because of its contiguity with the city. And so this is a proposed purchase to purchase that swath of land in addition to the three acres that you already approved. And and that would allow us to annex that that piece as well as have sufficient access to that piece so that we could, that when it's built, it has sufficient access. So that is that is what's proposed tonight. Can you guys hear me?
Okay, any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions, it looks like. Okay, any quite, let me look at the attendees. There's a question for Mr., but I think that's from earlier. Yep, that's from earlier. I haven't X that one out yet. Okay, so I think with that, what would council like to do with this item? It seems simple enough.
Moved, approve.
Thank you.
Sharon.
And who just second?
Richard.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. We are going to go ahead and move on to our next item, item number nine C, resolution 20-057, a resolution authorizing the purchase of data storage, computing, and networking equipment, data center hardware and services. Ms. Godwin.
Hi. Go ahead and go down one more slide. So the the Technology Services Department is proposing to replace a portion of the city's internal data center infrastructure that's reaching its end of a supportable life. This means that the vendor is no longer supporting the hardware nor making replacement parts. This hardware was originally purchased in 2014 and paid for by capital funds out of electric and water. And the general city portion was financed through a capital lease that lease ended in 2019. We went ahead and we reached out to vendors regarding a refresh and provided them with our storage requirements, compute usage, and growth rate. The vendors came back with various architectures designed at different price points. We narrowed down to our two top choices that we felt met our needs, addressed some of the current deficiencies we have, and would not dramatically increase the budget. Some of the options we immediately eliminated do we eliminated due to cost. Other things that we looked at were simplifying our current setup. We looked at how it was easy to expand our system. We wanted to make sure that we had different expansion options depending on our needs in the future. We also contacted references that worked with the vendors and had similar architectures that we were looking at. And last, of course, we always looked at cost. With many options that we had, we wanted to get everything that we could in our wish list. But that wasn't feasible because some of the times when they came back, the cost was just so high that we ended up eliminating some of the things that we we wanted. The other things that we looked at were financing terms. Due to the COVID-19 environment, a lot of the vendors have special financing and discounts going on right now. I'm going to go one more slide, please. Now, as we move to with the proposed new solution, there are a lot of benefits. I'm going to turn this over for Greg to moment to go over the benefits. Greg?
Yep. A couple of the key benefits, probably one of the biggest ones is the recovery time. If a complete site fails, whether that's from a power outage, hopefully never happens, but the loss of a building. Basically, anytime that site is just down, we're going now to recovery time of about five to 10 minutes versus right now several hours. And it could be up to a week, depending on exactly what happened with the the site that failed. This gives employees the opportunity to continue working and provides better services to the citizens for some of our online services, such as utility bill payments. Is a big one. The design that we built six years ago was kind of a building block toward this. Without doing what we did six years ago, we wouldn't be able to take this next step that we're doing to have a more resilient environment. And but we will be operating under two different sites. Since both the production site and the secondary or disaster recovery site are similar, we can test them from time to time and actually shift their roles where the backup site is now primary and the primary is the backup. It kind of helps us serves two purposes for us. One, we'll know what happens if something fails. And second, it validates that the backup site can take over and actually operate the entire load that we're asking it to do. Expansion and growth, we definitely thought about that. As Lisa just said, there's several ways we can expand it. We can add just more storage if we find that we're running out of storage. If we see that we don't have enough computing or processing power, we can just add processing power, or we can do both at the same time, depending on the need that the city has at the time.
Okay, the next slide, please. So back to money, the cost of the system. The cost will not exceed 580,000, which includes the least lease purchase amount plus a little bit of a contingency, approximately about 2%. Lease payments will be split into five equal annual payments, not to exceed 116,000. And those payments will be split equally between the general electric and water funds. With this purchase, it will eliminate a reoccurring fee of $30,000 from the general fund. So the net impact to the general fund will be an additional 9,000 per year for five years. Last, the pricing is through the NASCO contract. So it's a state, it's a state procurement contract and is financed with a 0% interest rate for the duration of the lease. There's also an option to purchase all the hardware at the end of the lease for a dollar. Oh, please keep in mind, this proposed purchase purchase is for a portion of our data center. We are in the currently in the middle of another five-year cycle that we purchased in 2018. At the end of that cycle, we will bring options for replacement for that portion. And hopefully, some of those options we deem too expensive this time around will come down in cost for that refresh. Most of the equipment that we use in our data center has cycles, and most of the equipment falls within these two. However, we do have some equipment that don't fall within these two cycles. I just wanted to be clear on the fact that we're not replacing the entire data center. This is for a portion of the data center. And if there are no questions, I would recommend that City Council approves resolution 20-576, approving the purchase of new hardware, software, and professional services.
Okay, thank you for all that information. I'm going to go ahead and go to council and see if there are. I'm going to go ahead and go to council and see if there are any questions. I've got a bunch of lights on, so I'm going to go to Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Yeah, not a question, but comment really. I just wanted to say thanks to the team for yet again, doing a ton of diligent work to find ways to get expanded and improved. And in this case, even new capabilities at an incredibly small cost increase to the budget. Having had a chance to just get a glimpse into the architecture that was proposed and would be implemented. I just would say to anybody listening, this is a, going to be a dramatic improvement in capability and resiliency and personally, I'm all for it. So that's all I had to say.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Can you say that? Thank you for explain, and, and, oh, whoever else was on the call, thank you for explaining it so easily and thoroughly. I really appreciate that. So if we're not replacing the whole data center, can you give me like a rough percentage? Is it a third, half? What is it?
I would say I, in my mind, I divide it into thirds, but it's not equally into thirds. So the two thirds, the, the two, I would say large thirds are the two five-year cycles. And I'm going to call it that other third is all the extra equipment that adds up. It's not, it's not going to cost as much as these two, but it's easy to kind of split it that way. But think about, what's the best way I think I would put it is maybe forty-five, forty-five and ten. Paul, would you agree with that? Paul and Greg?
Yeah, I think that's a pretty good assessment.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
This, yeah, this is probably the, you know, the fundamental chunk of it. And then the next one will, would round that out. And then I would say the, the third third, as, as you put it, would be support hardware, networking, that sort of thing.
Yep.
So this is one of the forty-five percents?
Yep.
Thank you, once again, explaining it very easily. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and thanks to the entire staff and Greg and Paul and Lisa, of course, for putting this all together for us and, and keeping us in the know. So with that, I see no other questions or comments. I'm going to go ahead and call for a motion. All right, Mr. Mayor Protem.
I enthusiastically move approval.
Ooh, enthusiastically. And Ms. Estes?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
I'm going to vote yes, but I want to make sure about the, the number on this one. Is it twenty zero five seven or five six? Because I think Lisa, when she talked about it, she said it was twenty zero five six. And then my copy says five seven. I just want to make sure we got the right, the right one.
The resolution number.
Let me look that up because I don't have that in front of me. On the agenda, it has, you're right, it's five seven. But let me just make sure the resolution is five seven.
It's five seven.
Okay, then the correction, can it be five seven?
Five seven? Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Did you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Geek on that, on the, on our packet. It does say zero five seven as well, so on the actual resolution heading. So we'll just stick with that and thanks for the clarification. Again, thanks team on that work. Move on to nine D, resolution two zero dash zero five eight. A resolution to approve the conveyance of various rights of way for road construction in the area of Scroll Creek Road and Link Road. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item, just a little bit of background, as, as I'm sure you're all aware, we're kind of engaging with, with a few partners in the community to do some construction on Link Road and Scroll Creek Road, kind of on your way to the landfill out there. And as that progress, project has progressed on, parts of the road and including some of the intersections have needed widening to make them safer and, and more secure and to be able to last longer. And so with that comes purchases of right-of-way, well, I'll say conveyances of right-of-way just from the, from the nearby property owners to do that construction. And so if Todd would get mad at me if I didn't remind you all that the, the city is not spending any city resources on this project. But it's, it's working with the, these community partners to, to, to make these road improvements. And so part of that is that we've had to acquire these sections of right-of-way that you have attached. But part of the problem too is that, is that these transactions move quickly. And when they happen, there's a lot of kind of moving pieces. And, and so to make these deals work, we had to move quickly to get them done. And, and Scott, as a city manager, signed these conveyance documents. But if you really look at the charter, it, it requires council approval for any conveyances of, in interest in land or real property. And so I sort of read that to mean that the council needs to approve these, even though they're relatively minor. That, and so this sort of batch of, of conveyances, we are seeking retroactive authority for Scott to sign those particular agreements. And, and this kind of also exposed a, a problem moving forward. And so that's what the, the next item is. But for now, for this resolution, we are seeking approval for the, the right-of-way conveyances that have already been signed by Scott. Subject to your questions, that's all I have for this one.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and look to council, Ms. Thompson.
Troy, I'm just really curious why, and going through this, it was very kind of the couple of, of them were, that had the ability to donate the funds, but some of them say temporary easement, even though they're being, one of them being paid money for the property, but it still has temporary easement checked on it. I'm just curious about that.
Is there a specific? Yeah, go ahead, Brandy, if you can, if you can answer that.
So the reason that we're paying for those, Sharon, is because we actually need to get on their property to do the improvements. But ultimately, the improvements will only be within the right-of-way. But in order to make the grading work and the contours work and the earthworks work to hold up the road in certain sections, we actually have to get onto their property, regrade their property, reseed their property, but then in the future, we actually don't need access to their property. So it's only a temporary use of their property. Does that make sense?
Okay, that just, it, it looked a little confusing, like we were purchasing the right-of-way and then it said temporary, so that was a little confusing.
Yeah, we're still paying them because we are inflicting damage on their property. So we want to compensate them, but it really is just a temporary usage so we can build the final product.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Brandy.
Okay, and I don't see anybody else's mics on Troy, so just hang with me for a second to make sure public's good. All right. That all seems pretty simple and standard and, and again, Todd, thank you for making sure that we're, we're good with the, all that work or the money that they're putting into our project. So that's been great. And I know a lot of the work that you guys did to, to make that happen. So if we didn't go that route, we'd still be in, in the same position we were two years ago. So good job on that. So with that, I will look for a motion from council. Mr. Applegate?
Yeah. Excuse me. Move to approve resolution twenty dash zero five eight.
All right, and Mr. Geek?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right. Oh, great job. Thanks again, Troy. All right, I think we are on item nine E, is this correct? Kind of lost my way here. Item nine E, resolution two zero dash zero five nine. Resolution authorizing the city manager or the city manager's representative to enter into certain contracts and agreements on behalf of the city of Fountain, Colorado and its enterprises. And Mr. Johnson's going to continue with us today.
Yeah. So just sort of where, where we stand with the, the charter and our, just the financial policies and procedures. Section two point three of the charter says that all contracts, conveyances and, and conveyances of interest in land shall be approved by the mayor or delegate. And our financial policies delegate that the, the city manager can approve various agreements. But if they're involve conveyances of interest in land, then he is not permitted to do that unless given authorization by the council. And so when we were going through this, this Link Road project, it kind of exposed the a potential need to act quickly in these kind of certain circumstances where right-of-way acquisition is needed because of the way the closing works and things like that. It, it's difficult to wait the two or three weeks to get council approval because the numbers may change in that time. And so if, if you all remember, resolution zero eight dash zero zero four is what the council has approved in the past that gives the city manager the authority to sign various agreements given certain parameters. And so this is just a proposed resolution to refresh that, that resolution, keeping it mostly the same, except with the addition of adding an exception for right-of-way conveyances within his, his authorized dollar figure, which, which I also changed in this document as well because the council approved a, a change to the financial policies, which amended this number as well. So I figured this was an appropriate time to make that change in the resolution. And so this would give the authority to the city manager going forward to, to make those conveyances or to, to do whatever paperwork is necessary to make those conveyances in the future, as long as they're under that dollar amount. And so that's all I have, but happy to answer questions.
Mute?
Yeah.
I'm not muted, I'm looking right at it too. So seems pretty straightforward. I'm looking to see if there are any questions from council in the public. Okay, it looks like we are good. If no further comments or questions, I would need a motion from council. All right, Ms. Estes?
I move to approve resolution twenty dash zero five nine.
And Ms. Duncan?
I second.
Okay. And Ms. Huffman, go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot, Troy. All right, on to item nine F, resolution number two zero dash zero six zero. A resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year FY 2020 budgeted funds and amending resolution number two zero dash zero three zero. It says we have Mr. Lewis and he is on, go ahead.
Good evening, council and citizens. This is John Lewis, City of Fountain Finance Director. I miss attending these meetings in person and seeing all your warm, smiling faces. But appreciate the opportunity to present to you this second supplemental for the 2020 budget. As you are aware, you approved the 2020 budget back in November 19th of 2019. And then based on certain capital items that were carried forward from 2019 to 2020 because of projects that were not complete in 2019, you amended the 2020 budget on April 28th. In addition, there were some additional necessary expenses that had not been previously included in the 2020 budget. So you approved those also on April 28th. Since April 28th, city personnel have been made aware of additional necessary expenditures that need to be made in 2020. And some of it is because of additional revenue that we have that is corresponding to those required expenditures. So city staff is therefore recommending formal approval by city council to amend the 2020 budget for these additional items. If we could go to the next slide, please. The next slide. Yeah, the, the next slide is exhibit A that lists out those supplemental items. Thank you, Paul. For the general fund, we, we are requesting an additional 5,000 insurance for the legal defense to cover the remainder of the year for CPBA and additional 8,000 insurance for detainees that we have there and that, that police have detained, when they have the detainees and, you know, to cover any liabilities, et cetera. We also had a problem with the well at Medcap Park. And in order to water the lawn there, we needed to fix that well pretty quickly. That was 18,500. There was an additional cost of the lease from Bobcat because the, the company changed the, the lease terms and it was still a good deal for us. In addition, we have the maintenance service contract renewal on the police department body cameras and the Brazos equipment and software for code enforcement. So the total impact to the general fund will be a decrease in unrestricted reserves of 168,500. Can we go to the next slide? So this shows the amount for the water fund where we received us from a, a past agreement and it's been a couple of years. So we, we, and, and by the way, we have additional monies coming from this, from Widefield, from that agreement, but we received 736,380. We also received some money for recycling used water meter parts. So that was 4,300. So in total, the revenue that had not been budgeted in 2019 for 2020 was 740,680. And water requests the permission to use those funds to, first of all, pay for a day cab, to pull large pieces of equipment to construction sites from the new joint utilities building. And also 3,380 dollars for conservation tools that are used to install demonstration landscaping and city buildings. 683,000 for the pumping station from the joint, for the joint utility operations building that was initially not projected. We did not think we were going to need that, but it turned We did not think we were going to need that, but it turns out we do. We've also transferred money from operations and maintenance for the Venetici water purchase that we found is not necessary now this year. Instead, transfer it to operations and maintenance for tap saddle replacements that are now needed. The 4,300 that we received in revenue from used meter parts, we want to put into additional meter replacement. And last but not least, water funds portion of GIS ortho imagery. In the last supplemental, we approved electrics portion for that. So now it's water's portion. Next slide, please. And last but not least, the electric fund. We're asking for 337,260 for conductors and other equipment associated with the Jimmy Camp substation, and then another 220,000 for distribution lines. And the net effect on the electric fund is a decrease in net position of 557,260. With the water fund, I forgot to mention the net impact is a decrease in net position of only $2,600. So with that, I would like to ask for permission to approve this supplemental.
Okay, thank you, John. I'm going to look to council to see if there are any questions on the item. Ms. Thompson?
If anybody else has a question, they're welcome to first. Nobody else?
Go ahead.
Okay. The $113,000 on the Axon renewal on the body cameras, can you explain to me why that was not included in the regular budget from Public Safety that was done earlier this year? It's not a new expense.
Right.
Joe, do you want me to take this?
Way in on that.
Yeah, so what this is, is the Axon renewal. We've actually paid already for 2020. What happens is it's a maintenance contract that lasts 12 months. However, it starts and ends, I want to say, right at the beginning of October. And because majority of the maintenance contract is in when we received the invoice in 2019 is for 2020, what we normally do is we pay it out of 2020 funds. However, now that the Senate bill, and forgive me, I forget which, I want to say it's Senate Bill 217, has passed, we want to make sure that we don't wait and pay out of suspended funds. We pay immediately as soon as we get that invoice, so we're not out of compliance. So it's still a yearly expense, but we're paying it in the year that we receive the invoice instead of the year that we have that we're paying for most of the maintenance.
I understand that, but that still doesn't explain why it's having to come back as a supplemental item if it's an anticipated expense or bill you're going to get every year, and it's not included in this budget from that department every year.
It was included, we just already paid it in January. And we want to pay it again in October instead of January.
Okay, so how is that going to be shown in next year's budget?
So we'll still have it as the 113, but we'll be asking for it for the 113, but instead of paying it in January, we'll just pay it in October. And that will cover the October, November, and then cover into 2022. So it'll cover the three months in 2021, and then the nine months in 2022.
Okay, we'll talk later. It's just still not.
So Lisa, I guess.
If it's an anticipated expense, it should be in the budget supplemental.
So Lisa, let me see if I understand you correctly. It would normally be an anticipated expense for the 2021 budget? But since we're trying to accelerate payment to October, it's coming up as what appears and what is the supplemental for this year?
Correct, because we've already paid it in this year. So what we've already budgeted for Axon, we've already utilized in January. And because we want to make sure that we don't have any laps in service, we want to make sure that we pay it as soon as we get the invoice.
So this is basically a way of speeding it up? And instead of well, not speeding it up, but instead of waiting, instead of waiting six months to pay it, we're going to go and be able to take care of it in October?
Correct, because one of the things that we talked about, or one of the things that I work with finance on because we have a lot of maintenance contracts, is if they come in in the last quarter, quarter four, we try to pay them out of the following year because they cover majority of the following year. So this is, I'm going to call it the oddball one that we're trying to pay it in the year that it comes in, even though the payment covers coverage is for majority for the following year.
Okay, yeah, I think I'm seeing I'm kind of visualizing just shifting it forward a little bit and then being able to, with that, doing a supplemental to shift it forward, then basically every year's anticipated expense will have sitting there and waiting to go in October. So they're basically all shifted forward from this point forward, from this point on.
That's what I'm asking to have happen in the next budgets. And I get everything you're saying, Lisa. I just want to make sure that we have it correct moving forward from now on, you know? You know, because now we're taking the money out of the supplemental funds, and we just need to make, you know, I understand it. I just want to work with Scott to make sure it ends up a little bit differently in the next budget.
And Sharon, you'll still see it in their request for 2021 and 2022 because it's a yearly expense, so you'll still see it in 2021 and 2022.
Well, I understand.
It's just a big. I'll make a note also, Councilman Thompson, to make sure we have it in the budget in '21 and '22 and not in a supplemental. And understand that it started off being paid late every year to try and cover it for the nine months where it was really applicable. And this gets it, so it makes more sense, and we're not out of compliance for three months.
Yes, that's very important, too.
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify that in my own mind. Thanks.
That's just a big chunk of change to see in a supplemental budget. So I think it needs to be explained so everybody understands it.
Indeed, good point. Okay, any other questions?
Actually, Mayor Ottega, this is Lisa Huffman. I do have something that I'd like to add to this resolution, if I may.
Go ahead.
There's actually a supplemental request that was submitted a while ago for two scoreboards in Metcalf Park for a total of $11,300. Those scoreboards were budgeted through both Parks Department and Recreation. However, they were not listed as a capital purchase item. They were listed because those scoreboards were actually damaged after we had already submitted our claim for the hail storms that we had. We didn't, we weren't aware that they had been damaged. But we did want to get those replaced. And like I said, the money, the funds are within our Parks Department budget and our Recreation budget, which we're splitting the cost. But because it wasn't listed as a capital item, I need to add that to the supplemental request, if I may.
Okay, I think that, so we're just adding that to this request here in total?
Yes, the supplemental request of $11,300 for scoreboards at Metcalf Park. And like I said, it's not an increase in the budget. This has to be done this way.
Okay.
We are transferring it from operations to capital. So I can, so it won't change the general fund numbers, but it would change the exhibit, and I can change that exhibit to be attached to the resolution for, and forward that on to you, Sylvia, this evening.
So I believe that within the, is it going to change the resolution, the body of the resolution, John?
Well, if it's coming out of operations and maintenance going into capital, it's not going to change the net effect to the general fund. It's just coming from one account to another. Because we always want to get council to approve anything that goes into capital if it's coming from operations.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, your mic's on. Did you have a question or anything?
No, I just forgot to turn it off. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I just want to make sure I'm not missing anybody. Okay, so as we do or do not make a motion tonight, make sure to include, I don't know if we need to say anything special for the extra park stuff that was just the scoreboards, or if we can just do it all in one motion with that. And so I'm not seeing any mics on for questions. And so that seems like that one would be okay to add to that, Ms. Huffman. So with that, I will look to council to give a motion on our supplemental. Mr. Geek?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 20 dash zero six zero.
And Mr. Applegate?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and second, and I'm going to go back to Mr. Geek. That's to include the scoreboards?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put that in there.
Okay, no, I just want to make sure that it's on the record. And then, Mr. Applegate, your second, still good with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for approval of the supplemental with the addition of the scoreboards for Metcalf Park. Ms. Huffman?
Thank you. Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. We will move on. That's it for our regular agenda tonight. We do have.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, John. We have correspondence, comments, and extra official reports, item number 10. So I'm going to go ahead and start with city manager, Mr. Trader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I have just two quick things I want to bring up. Number one, I want to thank everyone for attending the council retreat on Saturday. I thought that was a great discussion around the strategic plan. We'll be bringing some updates to the city council from that mid-year retreat for the strategic plan. A couple amendments and additions at the next council meeting. So just want to thank you for that. I think that was a great discussion, very helpful. Secondly, I just wanted to report out on the Business Impact Assistant Program that to date, we've got close to 300,000 approved. And now the group is looking at potentially expanding that out to nonprofits and some home-based businesses, but we're just working through the requirements for those. So that will come to the city council, hopefully at the next meeting, so we can get those approved, and we can start issuing those out for other businesses as well. Our first priority has been to get it out to the businesses out in the community that are the brick-and-mortar businesses. So anyway, it's been, it's been successful so far. We just want to get those monies out, so just want to pass the word on.
Okay, I do want to say huge thanks to Lexi. Lexi Lee for really kind of moving that thing forward and really, she was calling businesses and saying, hey, we've got this money, please, please apply. We want to help you. And I think she even sat down with a couple of the small businesses to help them apply. And I know that was a little bit of difficult, just for some people, and, you know, just trying to get through the application and thing. But she was very patient and was really instrumental in moving that forward. So I just want to publicly thank her for all the hard work on getting that taken care of.
Thank you. I'll pass that on, and she's done a heck of a job. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Okay, Mr. Evans?
I do not, Mayor. Everyone stay safe.
All right, thanks a lot. I'm going to go ahead and go through my list here that I have. I'm going to see Ms. Godwin, anything from my team?
Not at the moment, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Blankenship, utilities?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to point out if the individual who asked the question earlier is still listening to our meeting, they can contact, WhatsApp?
He's not on anymore.
Okay, okay. Well, I wasn't, I didn't think, but he could certainly contact Mike Fink. And if we can figure out who that was, we'll call, we'll reach out to him, and Mike will be able to provide him with some more detailed information.
Okay, Scott, we have his email address, so Scott can get you in contact.
Okay, perfect. I'll make sure I get that to Mike tomorrow and ask Mike to reach out to him and give him some specific information and answer any other questions that he might have.
Okay, that sounds great.
Excellent, thank you. No, that's it. Good evening.
All right, you too. Troy, anything from attorney's office?
Nothing else from me this evening. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, anything further?
I was muted there, sorry, no. Nothing further. Well, other than we're still cranking through the audit, which took longer due to the pandemic and our auditors not being able to come into our offices. And we're having to work very diligently, particularly Sean, on getting a lot of things copied and scanned and sent to them by email. We are anticipating getting it out on, by July 31st, and having a presentation to you in August by the auditors. And that's all I had.
Okay, and then are we going to start soon on our next? Because are we working on the next biannual?
Yes, we are working on the next biannual. I had a Zoom meeting with Open Gov today, and the training is going to be online. The Open Gov individuals can't come. They can't travel because of the pandemic. It's one of their company rules, so all of the training will be online. So we're working on how we're going to do that and what the calendar will be. And we should have more details on that next week.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going through the rest of the staff. If there's, oh, Mr. Trilch?
A good evening, Mayor and council. I have nothing for this evening. Just good to tune in and listen in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I think that is everybody, unless I'm missing anyone from staff that would like to say anything. I know there's a couple of you on, but usually I think you're good with not speaking. And I'm not seeing anybody there. And I will go to council, and I will start with, hopefully Ms. Duncan's mic is working, and we'll see. Go ahead. Okay, I will go ahead and move forward to Mr. Geek, anything further tonight?
Nothing from me, thank you.
All right. Mr. Applegate?
No, I just congratulate the young man from the police force that's moving on to the FBI. That's pretty impressive for him and our policeman. That's all.
Okay, great. And just for anybody who's listening that is not aware, we had one of our fire, not fire, I'm sorry, police department guys who is a local boy. He grew up here in Fountain and applied to the FBI and is going to be heading off to the FBI and working there. So we're really excited for him and as he moves forward. So I did forget, Ms. Huffman, I'm going to come back to you here at the end anyway. So I'll let you announce your information. And then I'm going to go to my left here, Ms. Estes.
I have nothing further tonight, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Ms. Thompson?
Just a question for Scott. The CDOT presentation that I had asked them to do on the construction they were going to do, the presentation to council, do we have any idea when that's going to get on the agenda?
No, they haven't reached out to us. Weren't they going to reach out to us?
No, no. If you could contact Shane.
No. No, we've reached out to them, but they haven't reached back to us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. I will pursue it from my end then. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Huffman, I'm sorry, I skipped you on the staff time.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report real quickly that our last movie night in the park was July 17th. And I'd like to consider it a small success. We had approximately 75 attendees. Social distance, everything went really smoothly. Our next one is actually scheduled for August 21st, and we have the availability for those who want to attend. We encourage you to go on the Recreation website under Team Sideline and register for that movie. So then we don't have to stop you on your way in and get all of your contact information. It just makes the process quicker. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, no, I heard that was good. And and that was actually a really nice night that night, too, I remember, because I could hear it from my house. But from the from what I understood, people were just excited just to be able to do something like that again. And and we kept it in a way that, like you said, everyone was socially distanced. And and it was just a nice break from everything and kind of, again, I keep going back to this, but back to our normal, you know, a little bit. And so I do appreciate you and everybody else at the Park Department, Gordy and all them that work really hard to to set that area up to be able to do that for our city, our community. And those that attended had really great things to say. So thank you for doing that. That's a really neat thing. And what's what's the movie going to be in August?
I'll have to check the listing. Gordy is responsible for all those amazing movies.
All right, sounds good. Okay, with that, I have nothing further for tonight. Our next meeting is going to be August 11th. So just so everybody's aware of that. We do have a executive session, so I'm going to go ahead and let Ms. Huffman read that in.
Thank you. I'd like to request an executive session presented section 24 dash 6 dash 424 F for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter and not involving any specific employee who has requested discussion of the matter in open session. Any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees.
Okay, so we need a motion to go into executive session. I see Ms. Duncan's mic is back on. We'll see if she can, if you can make the motion. Then we'll do a second and a vote. And then I'll go back to you if you have anything you want to share further tonight. So let's let's try the motion, Ms. Duncan. Okay, doesn't look like.
I make a motion that we adjourn and go into executive session.
Okay, Mr. Geek?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to go into executive session. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven yes. Motion carried. Seven yes. Motion carried. And the information for the executive session was emailed to all of you earlier today. If you have any questions, please give me a call.
Okay, and Ms. Duncan, did you have anything you want to share?
I I hope you can hear me. I just wanted to say that again about our youth council is open for registration. And I really want to give a big shout out to Lexi. She did a lot of great hard work on our pamphlets that we have. They look great. They're professional. She's very. Did you hear me?
Yeah, we, you got lost at professional.
Shout out to Lexi.
Okay, okay. Yeah, Lexi does a really great job for the entirety of the city. So thank you for helping with that, Lexi, on the youth council. And again, just as a reminder, 14, 18 years old, you can get an application by coming to City Hall or going to fountaincolorado.org and the information will be there as well. So with that, I will adjourn our meeting and we will see you all or talk to you all on August 11th, 2020. Council, remember to call in. Give us about five, six minutes for Sylvia to get set up. Take care.